I'm going to move on to the second public hearing, which in our regulations is to commence immediately at the end of the first public hearing. And so I have to read essentially the same script. Is that correct? For this one, we have, there it is. That one there. Right. As we move on to the second public hearing of this evening, we have, this is for 1915 to 1987 Glenair Drive and 1974, 1982, and 1990 Belle Isle Place. This is for OCP and zoning bylaw amendments. This public hearing is being convened pursuant to section 464 of the Local Government Act and is being held in a hybrid meeting format, meaning there's a combination of in-person electronic participation by some or all members of the council, staff, and the public. The chair has established the following rules for this hearing. One, the following the staff and applicant presentations, we will go through the established speakers list. At the end of the speakers list, the chairman call for any other speakers not on the speakers list. You will have five minutes to address the council for a first time. Begin your remarks to council by stating your name. After everyone who wishes to speak has spoken once, speakers will then be allowed one additional five-minute opportunity. Any additional presentations will be allowed only at the discretion of the chair. Please do not repeat information from your previous presentations and ensure your comments remain focused on the bylaws under consideration this evening. If you have provided a written submission, there is no need to read it as it will have already been seen by the council. You may summarize or briefly reiterate the highlights of your submission, but ensure your comments pertain to the bylaws under consideration at this hearing. All members of the audience are asked to be respectful of one another as diverse opinions are expressed. Council wishes to hear everyone's views in an open and impartial forum. Some important notes about public hearings. Council is here to listen to the public, not to debate the merits of the bylaws. Council may ask clarifying questions. The clerk is a binder containing documents and submissions related to the bylaws which council has received and which you are welcome to review. This is available on the table next to the door and online at dmv.org/agenda. Everyone at the hearing will be provided an opportunity to speak. If necessary, we will continue the hearing on a second night. At the conclusion of the public input, council may request further information from staff, which may or may not require an extension of the hearing, or council may close the hearing, after which council should not receive further new information from the public. Finally, please note that this hearing is being held via Zoom and recorded in accordance with the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Now ask the clerk to read the matter into the record.
Thank you, Your Worship. District of North Vancouver Official Community Plan Bylaw 7900, 2011. Amendment Bylaw 8672, 2024. Amendment 52. Bylaw 8672 proposes to amend the OCP land use designation of the subject site from residential level two detached residential RES2 to residential level four transition multifamily RES4. District of North Vancouver Rezoning Bylaw 1436, Bylaw 8673. Bylaw 8673 proposes to amend the district zoning bylaw by rezoning the site from single-family residential three RS3 to comprehensive development zone CD153, CD153. The CD153 zone addresses permitted and accessory uses, conditions of use, and zoning provisions such as density, amenities, setbacks, height, building and site coverage, landscaping and stormwater management, and parking, loading, and servicing requirements.
Thank you. Similar to the last item, I will note that five members of council are here participating in this evening's meeting. Counselor Hanson is joining virtually. We have two members of council, Councilors Pope and Muri, who are not able to join us this evening. If they wish to pursue voting on the matter at second or third reading, they have an obligation to avail themselves of the minutes and or watch the video of these proceedings before they're eligible to vote. At this point, I'm going to call on staff representation here with Frankie McAdam to do the staff presentation you have up until you have 15 minutes in total.
Good evening, Your Worship, members of council and members of the public. My name is Frankie McAdam, and I am a development planner with the district. This public hearing is for the proposed redevelopment of 10 existing single-family properties at 1915 to 1987 Glenair Drive and 1947 to 1990 Belle Isle Place in the Lionsgate Lower Capilano Village Centre. It will allow for 104 owned townhomes. My presentation is 13 slides long and approximately 13 minutes in length. The development site, as you can see on the right, outlined in red, is 7,500 square meters or 80,700 square feet in size and is located between Belle Isle Place and Glenair Drive at the northwestern periphery of the Lionsgate Village peripheral area. The site is located adjacent to Belle Isle Public Park, of which is currently under development, and within 200 meters walking distance of the Lionsgate Community Recreation Centre and Public Plaza. The site is considered to be one of the last to develop at the Lionsgate Village peripheral area and is very similar in scale and nature to surrounding developments. This proposal has been reviewed against and is in alignment with key district policy such the peripheral area plan and the implementation plan, as well as the official community plan. The Lower Capilano Village Centre Peripheral Area Housing Policy and Design Guidelines, also known as the Peripheral Housing Plan, identifies this large development site as able to accommodate development suitable for townhomes up to three stories in height and at a density of approximately 1.2 floor-to-space ratio. This proposed OCP amendment is in general compliance with the intended land use of the peripheral housing plan as a ground-oriented multifamily housing development with a maximum of three stories and at an approximate FSR of 1.28. The proposal includes 10 three-story buildings arranged around a central interior walkway. Vehicle access to the single-level underground parquet is proposed from Glenair Drive, indicated in yellow at the top of the screen. Seven pedestrian entrances are proposed for the site. The unique site grading limits accessible entry to two locations at the southwest and southeast corners of the site. Along Belle Isle Place, you can see them in blue on the site plan. The proposal includes 10 basic accessible units with fully accessible path of travel to these and 13 other ground-floor units from the sidewalk and the interior walkway and also through elevators from the underground parquet. The developer has proposed to dedicate a significant portion of the development site being 360 square meters or 3,850 square feet to the district to provide for the widening and the extension of Belle Isle Place. These road dedications are indicated and outlined in red on the site plan at the bottom of the screen. Now, as explained in greater detail in the staff report, this particular application site proposes to absorb about 550 square meters or 5,850 square feet in area of allowable density as a result of a notional density transfer from an adjacent development site called the Eben Flow. As an outcome of discussion with the adjacent single-family neighbours at the northeast along McClellan Place, the Eben Flow development created a 45-foot-wide open space buffer along its entire eastern boundary. Council at the time recognized the developers' efforts to provide this gradual transition between housing forms and supported in concept that this unused and allowable density be transferred to an adjacent development site that did not border single-family neighbourhoods. This notional density transfer was passed by a motion in March of 2018 in recognition that the same applicant, Citymark and Woodbridge, owned both the Eben Flow site and the subject development site, and of course, they continue to do so. So the images that you can see on screen indicate in yellow the portion of land that was developed as the 45-foot-wide open space buffer at Eben Flow, and then, of course, the proximity of that Eben Flow development to the subject site. And then on the right, you can see an image of the completed buffer zone for the Eben Flow development that was occupied and obviously completed in August of last year. Overall, staff consider that the transfer density is appropriately accommodated in the proposal before you today due to the size, location, and assembly of the subject development site. The proposal is for 104 owned townhome units in total. The units are a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom homes ranging from approximately 450 to 1,350 square feet in size. As displayed on the table, the proposal includes 31 one-bedroom units, seven two-bedroom units, 53 three-bed units, and 14 of these three-bed units that are capable of lock-off suites. The proposal is considered to comply with the district's accessible design policy for multifamily housing with 10 units that are designed to basic accessible design standards. The applicant proposes to include additional enhanced accessible design features throughout each of those 10 units to enhance livability, of which features include wheelchair turning radius and kitchens, visual alarm wirings, and appropriate window openings and window sill heights amongst others. The parking rates proposed include 173 vehicle parking spaces, including 12 visitor-specific parking spaces and two fully accessible parking spaces at a ratio of 1.66 vehicle parking spaces per unit. 251 bicycle parking spaces are proposed, which includes 11 visitor spaces at an overall rate of 2.4 bicycle parking spaces per unit. Bicycle parking is proposed within secure bike storage rooms and a bicycle repair and maintenance area and a dedicated bike wash area are also located in the underground parquet. Staff are supportive of the proposed vehicle parking rates as they are consistent with the directions established in the OCP for town and village centres and are comparable to rates of nearby surrounding development. In terms of the project's sustainability, the proposed development will be designed to step four with a low emissions level three of the BC Energy Step Code. The project will include an all-electric energy source for heating and domestic hot water with high-efficiency heating systems and energy-efficient appliances. The project will include electric vehicle charging conduits for every car parking stall and all of the residential bicycle parking storage rooms are equipped with electrical charging outlets. The applicant has already held two public information meetings for the project. One for the initial 2019 application, which was an earlier iteration of the proposal, and one in 2023 for the current revised application that you see today. Notification of both public engagement processes was undertaken in accordance with district policy. The applicant held an in-person facilitated public information meeting on December 3, 2019, where 22 people attended. And for the revised application today, the applicant held an in-person public information meeting on May 31, 2023, and a virtual public information meeting for a two-week period over May and June. A total of 42 individuals attended the 2023 in-person PIM, and it were recorded that 83 individuals visited the virtual PIM webpage with 13 pieces of information and comments publicly posted. A copy of all of the input received regarding the project to date is included in the public hearing binding. And while the majority of public comments have been supportive of the proposal to date, there are comments that were raised by the community and by council that the applicant has endeavoured to address through application resubmission. Listed here on the screen are the most significant comments. Shown in the first column, matters raised include the proposal's ability to deliver affordable housing. The applicant responded to this question and concern essentially by increasing the number of lock-off capable units to a total of 14 of the 104. Secondly, access to the site for first responders. The applicant responded by developing a fire safety access plan with both the building and fire departments. Thirdly, wheelchair accessibility to and throughout the site, to which the applicant responded by including additional accessibility features in all accessible units. A main pedestrian entrance with a wheelchair accessible ramp and a second entrance accessible by wheelchair. There were some concerns about parking shortages and traffic congestion, to which the applicant responded by providing detailed traffic impact reporting confirming anticipated contributions of less than one vehicle every two minutes during morning peak times and less than one vehicle every three minutes during afternoon peak times. The applicant has also decreased the number of parking stalls to be further in alignment with the district's policy for alternative vehicle parking rates and included numerous transportation demand measures, management measures to support that rate. Traffic safety is also another theme of concern, to which the applicant has responded by developing satisfactory construction traffic management and impact mitigation plans with district staff. A concern for the infrastructure capacity throughout the village centre was raised, to which the applicant responded by providing infrastructure upgrades consistent with recent utility modelling studies and a coordinated civil engineering design for the entire peripheral area, which includes this and four other developments. And lastly, a desire for a road connection to which the applicant responded by purchasing the parcel at 1915 Glenair Drive and dedicating most of that parcel to a vehicle road connection. And that's from Belle Isle Place through to Glenair Drive. A copy of both the PIM summary reports and all of the expert reports that I've mentioned, such as the Transport Impact Assessment, are made available in the public hearing binder. Notable contributions of the proposal include a significant road dedication along Belle Isle Place, off-site improvements including sidewalks, crosswalks, utility upgrades that total over $1.45 million. DNV and regional development cost charges of approximately over $1 million and a fixed-rate community amenity cash contribution of nearly $2 million. It is noted or acknowledged that the entire cash contribution will be dedicated to the DNV Affordable Housing Fund that was passed by a motion at the first reading of this proposal in July of this year. In summary, the proposal meets key district policy and staff are supportive of the bylaws for OCP amendment and rezoning. Thank you for listening. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Okay, next, the applicants. When you're ready to go, you have 15 minutes to make your presentation.
Thank you very much. Can everybody see the screen?
Yes.
Great. Thank you very little in council. My name is Rebecca Nguyen. I'm representing Citymark. I have my colleague Jamie Howard from Woodbridge and also a few of our consultants here, Daniel Fung from Traffic Engineering and Steve Watt from Integra Architecture.
Is there a way to make it full screen?
Oh. Yes. Is that a bit better?
Mostly.
Okay. So we're pleased to be here tonight to talk about a central piece in the heart of Lionsgate Village, with this proposal being a key part of completing the northerly side towards Belle Isle Park and providing a much-desired new pedestrian and road connection for the neighbourhood. This is Citymark and Woodbridge's third project in this area, and we very much look forward to completing the vision here to welcome many families to live in this beautiful community. What we heard from council in our community was to provide more housing options. To address secondary rental potential, we increased the number of lock-off suites to a total of 14. We would expect the secondary rental suites within these lock-off homes to potentially rent from $900 to $1,000 a month, making these relatively affordable options for students or grandparents or others needing housing in this kind of form with their own front door. It also provides a means for a young family who wants to enter into home ownership to supplement income to afford an entry-level townhouse product to qualify for their necessary mortgage to buy their first home. The project's mix of one, two, and three bedrooms was carefully studied, learning from our other townhouse projects in the area. The proposal focuses on a housing mix that meets the needs for housing demands for first-time homebuyers and young families in particular, with livable floor plans and no larger luxury-sized homes, unlike some of the townhouse product in the immediate area. We know a lot about this demographic living in this community and aptly named our first project in the area, Eben Flow, to represent the numerous families who have North Shore roots and want to return here to raise their kids, to be close to families here in North Vancouver. The project also serves a downsizer demographic with one and two bedroom options in the housing mix. The project is providing almost 2 million in community amenity contributions directly to the District of North Vancouver. We understand this will be earmarked for priorities the district is envisioning, such as the Affordable Housing Fund to address housing needed for the community. We also heard that delivering connections within the area was important to the overall vision of the neighbourhood. The proposal is key to the neighbourhood's completion for new sidewalks and pedestrian movements around the whole of the site in a central area of the neighbourhood that is currently missing much-needed sidewalks around the site. The public pathways around the site create stronger pedestrian linkages to Belle Isle Park and the surrounding area, including Capilano River Trail, the Lionsgate Community Centre, and the Marine Drive Rapid Transit. The proposal is also creating a new Folsom pedestrian and road connection in the area by extending Belle Isle Road to connect to Glenair Drive. This was originally planned for as a pedestrian-only access in the district's Lionsgate peripheral housing plan. In the past, the District of North Vancouver was unsuccessful in purchasing the necessary parcel to build the desired new road. This road connection would not have been possible without Citymark and Woodbridge to pay much above appraised value for the necessary line in question, which is now part of a complete and well-thought-out assembly, taking many years to get here to what you see in front of you today. The purchase of this parcel for the new road fulfills a final missing piece that was desired by the community and exceeds the original plans for enhancing connectivity in the neighbourhood. The site is also proposing a new accessible seating space to activate this highly visible corner central at the neighbourhood at Fullerton and Belle Isle, which has added a second accessible point to the townhouse site. The accessible points of entry are indicated in blue arrows. The site is well-serviced with two elevators shown in pink circles with assisted powered door access to allow accessible entry from the lower underground parking areas, which are not required by code, but are being provided to serve the mobility needs of the residents. The townhouses are one of the first to target Step Code Four for ground-oriented housing developments in the District of North Vancouver, and we are proud to be adding a variety of sustainable initiatives to improve new construction and housing being delivered to North Vancouver. This includes an e-bike fleet for residents to reduce reliance on cars, making a reduction in parking supply, addressing what council raised previously as a concern, and a variety of other features addressing low-carbon and enhanced energy reduction targets. In summary, the proposal is meeting many overall objectives that the district has outlined in their policies. Our team is present and available to answer any questions council may have. We look forward to being part of the solution to address housing needs for first-time homebuyers, downsizers, young families, and adding to secondary rental stock in the District of North Vancouver. We thank you for your time this evening and look forward to answering any questions you may have.
Very much for your presentation. So at this point, we have eight people that did sign up to speak in advance of the meeting, and I have two more virtual speakers, three more virtual speakers that have added their name to the bottom of the list. So Garrett David Jacobson and Kevin McLary Glattery will be after the first eight speakers. The first speaker is Keegan Scharnberg, followed by Alan Hague. Is Keegan Scharnberg joining us here? Keegan Scharnberg joining us virtually. Do I see a name that represents that? Okay, well, we don't see Keegan Scharnberg yet at this point, so we're going to circle back to them a little later. The next speaker is Alan Hague, followed by Ian McDonald. It's Alan Hague here. Alan Hague joining us virtually. I don't see a name that represents that. Oh, there we go. There is a panelist. Welcome. Can you hear me?
Sorry. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, I can hear you clearly. Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I doubt I'll need five minutes. But a few of you know me, Alan Hague. I've been a longtime resident in North Vancouver. I have a mother and a brother not too far away from this, you know, from this development. And I think it's just, it's a great added benefit to the community to have diversity of housing. I'm obviously in a, you know, single-family home, and my kids are now in university, and we're looking at downsizing probably within the next couple of years. Keeping up with a, with a home is, you know, quite difficult, challenging to get to the second level to clean gutters. So it's a, it's just, it's an excellent and valuable addition. Obviously, for the seniors that are in the community, having access to smaller units, you know, much more affordable is a key, a key thing. So love its location, close to transit. I know my mom walks, you know, down the Capilano River to Park Royal on a regular basis. It's a great, great little addition. So I don't think I need any more time with that, but, you know, it's a great missing middle, affordable relative to the single-family homes that are in the District of North Vancouver. And it's, it seems like it's going to fit for me, you know, and my, my family. So that's, thank you very much for your time on that one.
Thank you. Can I get Alan? I didn't ask for your approximate home address.
842 20th Street West.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next speaker I have is Ian McDonald. I want to remind all the virtual participants that I need you to accept the promotion. So staff have a little pop-up that shows up on your screen that says you need to be promoted to a panelist to speak. And so I think they've sent it to Ian. There we go. Okay, now Ian is moving over. Ian has dropped off. Okay. There we go. Okay. Ian McDonald, can you hear me? Ian McDonald, you are muted on the Zoom system. Can you unmute? And can you hear me?
There, I'm unmuted, I hope.
Yes, you are. I can hear you clearly. Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Okay, again, I hope as the previous commentator, I won't take full five minutes. Just to give you a little color, I am a former resident and homeowner at Belle Isle Place. I can tell you that it was a wonderful experience. I got married there. I had my children there, and a sad story, of course, unfortunately, is my wife died there, but, but we lived there for 20-plus years. So I know the neighbourhood very, very well. It's an absolute perfect fit for this kind of density with its proximity to all of the amenities that are there, and certainly what's happened on Glenair already, et cetera, has, has proven that as, as a good viable alternative to the, you know, to the single homes that were there. What I really like about this proposal is What I really like about this proposal is, uh, a couple of things. Um, e-bikes, for example. Um, there are trails just across the bridge. For those who aren't familiar with the neighborhood, it's basically right on the Cap River. And if you cross the bridge, there are trails that go right to Park Royal. And even just south of the neighborhood as I was speaking about maybe eighty or a hundred meters south. There are trails that already exist that are paved that also go to Park Royal. That you can take all the way to Dundee rave. So you don't even need a car, although there, it's interesting that there are. Um, of course, uh, E V chargers, et cetera, and extra road access. Uh, in the proposal, which is wonderful for those who do have cars. Interesting to note, of course, it's right by Lionsgate Bridge and, and, and as we all know, and so there's great access there. Um, for public transit to go downtown. Uh, what I really like about this proposal, um, which strikes home for me as in the previous caller. Is I'm someone who's getting older, who might downsize. And so the idea of having lockoffs would be wonderful. Um, in my case, and in other people's cases, we have teenagers or people, maybe kids who are maybe in their twenties. Late twenties who might not be able to afford a home. And wouldn't it be great if they could come in and move in and have a lockoff? Um, and still have access to the family home. So that's one aspect of it. Uh, the other thing is if this is a first time home for, for double income earners. This could be a nanny suite. Uh, the opposite of that is if, if, if there are young families. Then they could have their elder parents who are not ready for, for a, like a long term home. Um, to be living in a lockoff suite. I really like that as part of the proposal. The neighborhood is wonderful. I speak for it, uh, with, with, with emotion. I can tell you, my daughter has one small tattoo. She's twenty years old. It's on the, um, it, it's on her forearm where it meets her elbow. And it has four numbers, one, nine, eight, two. And I asked her because I didn't know what it was. And she said, Dad, that was her address at Bell Isle Place. And it brought so many emotions back to me. I will tell you this for sure. That as I get a little bit older and consider downsizing. This would be a location and this would be definitely a project. That I would be interested in because of its unique qualities and what it brings to that little community. That's different from some of the other already existing, you know, which are wonderful. Uh, projects, the townhome projects that are already there. I'll, I'll leave it at that and give you back. Uh, I already took up about thirty seconds previously, so I apologize for that, by the way. Um, anyway, I'll, I'll leave it at that. If there's any questions for anything, happy to answer. Thank you very much.
Your comments, Ian McDonald. Next I have Shada Kiani followed by Tatum Askew. Joining us here in person. Welcome. When you're comfortable, you have five minutes to address the hearing.
Your worship members of the council, my name is Shada Kiani. Uh, I live at nine five five Melbourne Avenue. Uh, and I'm here to express my support for the project. And I want to say, why would I support this new townhouse project on Bell Isle? This townhouse project is key to finishing off the Lionsgate, uh, Lionsgate Village area. Uh, it is, uh, adjacent to Bell Isle Park and close to the camp center. They are all retail at Park West with five minutes walk, including two pharmacies and Park Royal close by. Uh, also, the project is providing new sidewalks around the entirety of the site. Uh, good for walking options. Uh, previously, the old houses there didn't have any sidewalks. The townhouses are going to be similar to the townhouses previously built in the area and would blend into. Well, with the other townhouses that are now already built there. Uh, it's make a lot of sense to add these townhouses here to, uh, finish revitalization of the neighbor, neighborhood. Uh, the townhouses are going to look great being beside the light park. Uh, it would be much better than the old houses currently left there. Yeah, and please support this project.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next speaker I have is Tatum Askew followed by Jahan Familili. To. Tatum and Quinn. Uh, I don't see a name that reflects Tatum. Askew on the virtual list. I see Quinn Askew, a couple of speakers down on the list, but, uh. We'll circle back in a minute and see if Tatum has joined the meeting. Next speaker I have is Jahan Familili followed by Quinn Askew. Welcome. When you're comfortable, you have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jahan Familili. I'm, I've been a long resident of North Vancouver for thirty years. And I'm currently living at two eight eight one Woodbine Drive, North Vancouver. I'd like to present my view on this project. The district needs housing like this to keep families on North Shore. I'd like to see more available housing for families who want to raise children in North Vancouver. We are losing too many families who need to commute from far away to go to work. Moving to Langley and Chelilwak. The lockoff suites could help a family afford their first home by renting out. To a student to help with mortgage payment. There's more flexibility on options for families with this type of arrangement. Grandparents could also live in the suite. I think this is a good option for housing for families with different needs. Thank you for listening to my, to me tonight, and your support is appreciated.
Thank you for your comments, Jahan Familili. Family. The next speaker I have is Quinn Askew followed by Colleen Burke. I believe Quinn is joining us virtually. Quinn, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Uh, clearly welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Perfect. Yeah, my name is Quinn Askew. Um, I've lived on the North Shore my entire life. Currently in West Vancouver. Um, I actually used to live on Glen Air Road, so I'm quite familiar with the area and also quite fond of the area. I'm twenty five years old now and looking to get into the market as a first time buyer. Hoping to stay on the North Shore and if I can in the Capilano area. Um, you know, I've heard that this might be one of the last developments in the area. Um, and I've, I've looked at the one bedrooms. It's, it's exactly kind of what I was hoping to get. And so I just wanted to publicly kind of express my support for this project.
Great. Thank you very much for your comments. Okay, the next speaker I have is Colleen Burke followed by virtual participant Garrett. Is Colleen Burke present?
I am.
Welcome. I can hear you clearly. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Okay, thank you very much for your time. I just wanted to share my support for the new development proposed to North Ban. I know the North very well. I've done a lot of work over there over the last ten years. Uh, right now I live in South Delta and I'm potentially putting my house up for sale in the next year and want to downsize. Um, I, my son and I live together here. He's potentially be going to the Capilano University. So the move would feel right to go to North Vancouver. Um, the one thing I do like about the units, um, that are proposed for. Bell Isle is the opportunity to have lockoffs, which would be a great help to our mortgage and to supporting my son going to school. Um, I think the development would be a fantastic addition to the community and I wanted to voice my support as someone who plans to become a resident there in the future.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for your comments, Colleen Burke.
And thanks for your time.
Next speaker I have is virtual participant Garrett, followed by virtual participant David Jacobson. Garrett, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Uh, clearly welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Perfect. Thank you. Um, I just, um, I moved into Ebb and Flow actually a year ago. And, uh, part of the community, so I've, uh, got to meet tons of, uh, neighbors and neighborhood people and it's a great culture and community. And what's nice to see is a lot of young families and, uh, and, and older people that have downsized coming together into, into one project. And I'd really support this, uh, project as been echoed with the lockoff suites because I think it's very important to keep this kind of. Community going with, uh, younger families. And I know that it's, um, it's a little hard out of reach for, for some people to get into a townhouse like this without a lockoff suite. So it really helps out these people to get into their first, uh, purchase in a, in a very good community. Lots of schools around and, uh. Looking forward to getting the dog park, uh, back there and, uh, hope we can get more people in the neighborhood like it. Um, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Garrett, the next speaker I have is virtual participant David Jacobson followed by Kevin McGlattery. David Jacobson, can you hear me?
Clearly, can you hear me?
Uh, clearly welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you very much and good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, my name is David Jacobson and I'm a resident of the District of North Vancouver. I live on Ross Road in Lynn Valley. Uh, I am a real estate developer. I'm focused on projects in East Vancouver, so across the water. Um, and I'm unaffiliated with the proponents of this project. Uh, I'm also a volunteer panel member of the City of North Vancouver's Advisory Design Panel. Um, I point that out because I want to make it clear that I, I do take interest in, in development matters on the North Shore. But specifically as a, as a resident. Uh, I do support this project. I really encourage council to do the same this evening. And projects of this nature add so much needed forms of family housing, uh, that foster community. And make, uh, the North Shore what it is and what it needs to be in the future, which is, uh, an inclusive environment for, for generations to come. Uh, this particular site is really well located. Um, it would be using underutilized development land in a well serviced village centre. Um, and, and this form of housing doesn't only offer housing choices that are more affordable. Than, than owning a single family home on the North Shore, which as we know is the majority of our housing stock. Uh, but these lockoff suites will provide rental homes that'll further enhance the affordability. Uh, not only in terms of owning one of these homes, but also for the renters who will be using those lockoff suites. I have two little girls growing up healthy and strong in the district. And housing like this is going to be so critically important when they, um, age out of our home and look to. Start their own households and hopefully that will be on the North Shore. Um, it seems that this developer has spent five years crafting and enhancing this proposal. And has responded to a lot of community and council feedback. Which is, uh, a significant investment in time and resources for a relatively low scale project. So I hope. They see some support tonight and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you very much for your comments, David Jacobson. I'm just looking to Kevin McGlattery. Uh, you should receive the prompt on your screen. We need you to accept that to become a panelist so that we can, uh, hear your comments. Kevin McGlattery. Okay, it'll just take a moment to move you over as a panelist. Okay, Kevin, are you able to hear me? You are marked as muted in the, uh, in the Zoom system. Can you unmute? You're still marked as mute in the Zoom system?
Unmute.
There you go. Fantastic. Welcome. Uh, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Apologies on that. Sorry.
No trouble at all. When you're ready, you have five minutes to address the hearing.
Yeah, I won't take up five minutes. Um, I was born at Lionsgate almost sixty years ago. I've lived on the North Shore. All my life. I used to live in the nineteen nineties in the Woodcroft Apartment Complex across the river from Glen Air. And in my opinion, it's one of the best areas on the North Shore for many reasons that the previous speakers have, have brought up. Uh, I currently live with my wife and my daughter in Edgemont. Uh, I'm in the process of retiring and found that there's a lack of new townhouses. And similar types of, um, buildings that are within this complex on the North Shore. And I plan on downsizing and it's the perfect fit for our family. So. I just thought I'd get involved with this meeting tonight and pass along my two cents.
Great. Thank you very much for your comments, Kevin McGlattery. I'm just gonna circle back. We, uh, missed a couple of people, just, uh, possibly technical issues. Just want to check in to see if Keegan Scharnberg has joined the meeting either in person or virtually. I don't see a name that reflects that. If your name is, uh, if you're sharing someone else's name or if you can raise your hand or change your name. Okay, uh, the next person I'm looking for is Tatum Askew. I don't see a name that reflects that. Okay, so we're gonna move on. Uh, at this point, I'll check in to see, uh, what does, would anybody else like to add their name to the list at this time, a virtual or in person? Welcome. Yes, come on down. You have, uh, five minutes to address the hearing. And I know you spoke at the last hearing, but you're still going to need to provide your name and address again, please, for the record.
Ms. Marina Koschleva, I currently live in ABB Flow. Um, I know this developer, so because I live in a bridge project. So, uh, it's really good, uh. Uh, we're gonna increase the spots for bicycles. But for your knowledge, uh, for past one and a half year, we had, uh, six breakdowns in our houses. And for me personally, it was stolen my bike. After like six months, it was stolen my husband's bike. And like somewhere, I think it's about five or seven bikes from other property. So, uh, my concern, uh, this project should be. Provide more security for bikes because, uh, it's probably could be increased, um. Uh, some weird activities. Uh, also, I'm thinking about this, about one hundred forty three spots, car spots. So it means if you again, it's, uh, with cars, not talking about emissions. Uh, and we have it, uh, Fullerton Street and we have it, York Street. And it's merged exactly in Capilano Road, exactly in Marine Drive. So it means one, how about environmental, if you have it, uh, gym, uh, sorry, traffic gym. Uh, uh, the next mic concerned about this, um. Uh, it's about EV. It's really good, but it's a question for you. It's enough for our, our in the future. Electricity for our, this area. If it's going to increase and this for each complex, I mean, I have a personal test. And I love it and I support it. But my concern, it's not enough for our electricity in the future. Uh, maybe we have to think about it right now. And sorry, I'm gonna come back to previous, uh, if. I remember correctly, we have it on. Means of address. And it means it's, uh, easy to access bike storage. We cannot build it solid wall. So it means again, I just have my concern. How is it gonna be, uh, increased crime in our neighborhood? Because of this situation. So, uh, also, it's increased about families, uh, kids and. I, I think it's more question for city for what you're gonna do with our schools. What you're gonna do with the day cares, walking clinics and access to grocery stores. It's huge complex. It's good. I really support. I really love Woodbridge, but it's personally really respect this company. It's really good company. And it's really good, but when it's smart, I mean, I saw it, it's a lot of, um, affordable housing, it's gonna be in the future, but. One quick one and so the other area company can need the kids to have just one year off. And the bedroom, that's all. It's really hard because a parent right now, I told you how private, like right now problems, not like. Couple of years, five years, whatever they had, no, right now. That's all.
Thank you very much for your comments. Would anybody else like to address the hearing for a first time? Okay, I'm just gonna check in with staff on any, uh, clarifying questions. I'm just gonna check in with staff on any clarifying questions from council. Have you received any, and if so, can you read them into the record and give your response?
Yes, thank you, through your worship, we have received one particular question. To councillor Ma, the question is, does the construction traffic management plan take into account other developments? Potentially being built at the same time, I'm assuming it means specifically in the, in the same area. And certainly, the, the construction traffic management plan does need to coordinate with other projects in the area. To minimize construction impacts on pedestrian and vehicle movement along Belle Isle, Fullerton and Glen Air Drive. And of course, other surrounding roadways. The applicant is already aware that road closures will only be approved for roadworks and service main upgrades. The CTMP is required to be approved by the district prior to the issuance of a building permit. There, there was a question from Mr. Ma about the, you know, can that detailed transport impact assessment and construction management plan be provided now? It's not finalized until the, the building permit stage, particularly because it does need to coordinate with very current development at that time. We can provide you with the preliminary plans at this stage.
Thank you very much, are there any other clarifying questions from council at this point?
Not that I can, oh, sorry, we might have one more, I just need to double check. No other questions, no other questions, thank you.
There you go, okay, so I'm gonna go back and check with the room, would anybody else like to address this hearing for a first or second time? Including virtual participants, if you want to raise your virtual hand, so I'm now gonna ask for a second time. Would anybody else like to address this hearing for a first, second, or third time? I'm now gonna ask for a final time, the last third time, would anybody else like to address this hearing for a first, second, or third time? There are none, I'll return the matter to the clerk, I believe we've exhausted the public speaking list. And so I will now ask the council for a motion, councillor back your motion.
I thank you, your worship, I would move that this public hearing be closed and that the matter be referred back to a regular meeting of council.
Thank you very much, is there a second or for that councillor Ma? Okay, I'm prepared to call the question, all in favor, contrary minded, motion is carried. Okay, and again, what that means is that this item is closed, that means the council cannot receive additional new submissions for their consideration. They'll make the decision at second and third reading based upon the information that they've received. If the members of the public have any clarifying questions, they're welcome to contact staff, please do not contact council on those particular matters. At this point, I'll check in with the clerk, when do you anticipate this item being returned for second and third reading?
Thank you through your worship, we anticipate tentatively scheduling this for November fourth to return, however, we'll need to confirm with planning staff.
Similar to the last item in this evening's discussion, the, the item we hope will return on November fourth. But it will be your responsibility to monitor the agendas in the week before that time, just to verify the timing on that. But that's our intent, is that November, November fourth is when this item will be back for second and third reading. At this point, we've completed the business of this evening's meeting, and so I'll accept adjourned, accepted from councillor Ma. I did want to just say thank you very much to the staff for the preparation of the reports for council's consideration. Thank the members of the public for participating in our public hearings, wish everybody a fantastic week, good night.
Good night, everyone.